Okay. Good evening, everyone. As a chair of this meeting, I will need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes, but I heard you and then you caught out for a second.
Okay. I have to just really speak up. Okay, speak loud. So can you hear me a little bit better?
Yes.
Correct. And Natasha Rivera, yes. Elizabeth Albota and Mara Holden will not be joining us this evening. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Yes.
Brian Haas?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yeah.
Chuck Carey. The computer.
Yes.
Chuck Carey. And is anyone joining us remotely?
I don't believe so.
Oh, yeah, Mark, I'm sorry. Mark Snopley, yes.
Yes.
But is any, anybody else joining us remotely?
Chelsea.
Chelsea.
No.
No, I'll be told there's. Okay. Hey, this open meeting of the school committee. Of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two Act 2023, signed into law by Governor Hillary on March 29th, 2023. This act continues to examine certain provisions under the Open Meeting Law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31st, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please know that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible and viewable by the public. If you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify me as required by law. And no hands raised. Okay, meeting materials along with the agenda. Most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School website in a folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas under the tab School Committee. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Public comments. The public comments agenda item is devote time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public comments period. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during a virtual meeting may do so by speaking up to, signing up to speak publicly in advance up to the public agenda item at, and Colin, you have that link.
Chat.
It is not, I will put it in. Okay, Colleen will put the link where you would sign up. Please have your Zoom match so we'll be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment points without the permission of the chair. As time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if the comment relates to a topic that has not written, that has not yet been brought up. Email comments in advance up to the public comments agenda item to comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12.us. You must state in the subject line, public comments, it includes your first and last name and how to ensure your comments can be read. Comments read by the chair will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they will be cut off at the three-minute mark. To ensure all comments are able to be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 minutes. I'm sorry, 350 words. However, submitted comments longer than 350 words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Anyone can comment, submit comments for public record after the public comment agenda has passed, provided that they email, send a copy of the email to commentsforscmeetings@maynard.k12.us specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Meeting ground rules before we go to the first item on the agenda permit me to cover some ground rules to more effective and clear conduct of our business. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will, I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions as they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments. Please hold on speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Before we move on to the agenda, please open the call to order via roll call. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Brantley? Yes. Natasha Rivera? Yes. Okay, and now we will go right into the hearing. There's a motion that you need to make. Yes. I see, reliable. Okay. All right, since it's past 7:05, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. FY24 budget in accordance with MGL, Chapter 71, Section 38N. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Brantley? Yes. Natasha Rivera? Yes. Okay. Brian, do you want to go ahead and?
Sure.
Something?
Colleen, you can pull up the budget presentation first. Yep, thank you.
Hi, welcome, everybody. I want to start by thanking the team who's been part of preparing the budget for FY24. With me tonight is our business manager, Wayne White, and Chuck Carajannis and Colleen Andrade, and this work is a result of a lot of people, a lot of time in school committee. And funny enough, the two people that are next to me are on the budget subcommittee, so they weighed in heavily on this. Natasha Rivera and Mary Brantley, so thank you as well. And I think you'll see there's not a lot of new information. We've been talking about this budget for several months now. But it's a recap for some of the high-level numbers and explanations as to where we are, what we need and why we need it. So next slide, Colleen, please. This just shows our allocated budget, personal level service budget, and you can see allocated budget, which is what the town allocates the schools to operate. And tan is the level service budget. And what you'll see over time is that we don't typically receive the level service budget. Always a little bit short of that. This really means we're doing our best to make do with a little bit less money to do and offer the same services. So it's a challenge. Most of our expenses are not negotiable, if you will. So the majority of our expenses throughout the presentation are salaries and wages. That's the majority. And then we have utilities and transportation, so high percentage of our overall budget is allocated before the year even starts. There's a small amount that is what I would say disposal. And we use that wisely. So that disposable supports student program. It supports extra clubs that happen on an annual basis when, you know, kids' interests shifts. That supports athletic uniforms, which aren't annually built into the budget. So it supports those types of. And then next column, you can see the allocated, the level service and the town proposal. So the town proposal would be the purple, which clearly is the lowest of the three. And then the level service actually the tan and the green isn't really allocated yet. The green would be our ask. So that's $100,000 over, over a level service budget because it has two additional asks. And if you think about an entire school system, hundreds of, you know, more than 100 teachers, 70 or so paraprofessionals, 1,100, 1,200 students. $1,000 in ask in addition to a level service budget is really minimum. Next slide, Colleen, please. So one of the topics that comes up relatively often is how much money do you spend on your buildings near grounds? Do you maintain them? So just really just way of reference, so people know we really do spend ability around to as much as we can to make them mean safe and presentable and as well maintained as possible. And so you can see between FY19, we've spent at least $200,000 up to closer to $400,000 in FY22. And as I mentioned earlier, we have two asks to get to our and one would be a district level administrative support person. And that is sort of a ball type position. That position supports multiple people. It would support student services, it would support athletics, it would support special education, and it would support the person all the way to my left on the table. If you can see on the screen, that would come down, right? And so what does that look like? Why do we need another person? So this is an administrative support person who would help and assist with Medicaid filing and Medicaid filing results in more monies being sent back to the town. It would support maintaining documentation for circuit breaker, for IEP documentations for transportation in terms of the business office, the purchase orders and invoices. Athletics, as you know, if you're a child participating, we went to an online electronic system to make it a little bit easier, but it allow, another person allows us to track that better to inventory uniforms and supplies and materials, the things that we need. Eligibility requirements, registrations, physical speeds. And the cost of that one person to do some, some, all of those things is $60,000. So we think strategically that is a really positive move for the district. And the other ask, with the next type of thing, has to do with students. And what are we, one of the things that we recognize is if we can increase student time on learning for our youngest learners, we're likely to close, close achievement gaps. And one way we can do that without upsetting the whole schedule and hiring many, many people is minimally change the schedule that we met up. So at their recommendation, that would be the administration and the teachers, that if we had four part-time lunchroom slash recess monitors, you know, our teachers from having to do those things and our paraprofessionals having to do those things. And the addition of that would add 90 hours of instruction over the course of the entire year. So it's a little bit every day. But if we think about that, 90 hours, that's like two weeks plus of instruction in time to our students. And that, in my mind, that looks like that's more math instruction, that's more English instruction, and that's really where we need to see the gains with our students. And we can do everything we can do. But if we had that additional time, we think that would absolutely benefit all of our students. And then again, the cost of that one, this $41,000 for those four part-time people for three hours a day. And on this slide, you can see that our ask with those two additions that I just spoke about would be 22,845,577. So that's all of our operating expenses and those two new positions. If we took a step back and said, okay, on these like I, and we could, we really want to maintain our level service at bare minimum and not lose anything. We would then subtract that over 1,000, that'd be a 22,745,577 dollars. And that covers our operating expenses, our contractual obligation. Abilities, facilities, maintenance, technology, curriculum, professional development, special education expenses, stipends, athletics. It's the same services that we're providing this year, and we are proud of the service we're providing this year. We're always looking for ways to improve this system. The town originally recommended beginning of the budget process, a allocation to the schools of 22,200 $734. So it's about, by just over $500,000 lower than a level service budget. So frankly, we can't do that. Like that, that number would be not doable for the schools to maintain. And then the number at the bottom of the screen is the five, that's 615 843, and that's simply the addition of the 100,000 for those two new positions. So really, I have a 515 or 615,000 dollars difference from the original town recommended allocation. And that's where we start to get into some deeper conversations. It's fun. I don't know if this is really the fun part. This, you might like this. So Colleen likes this part. This is the, I do. This is, these are the ones that drives our budget. So when we talk about, you know, how do you spend in $2 million? What does that look like? Where does it go? So as I said earlier, that money, salary and wages for all of our hardworking valued employees make up almost 18 million dollars of the 22. So we've taken huge chunk of that away. And then when we start to look at what else do we offer? Well, transportation, technology, utilities, facilities, curriculum, special education, professional development, stipends, so that we can run all these wonderful programs, athletics, and some additional other expenses. Actually, there's no secret there. It costs that much to run a solid district and we can, I want to be, we have a solid district. We have really good programming. We have strong extracurricular programming, and we continue to make grow even in a level service budget. Might have been more excited about this. District members are love grass. And then the team loves color, so we play a lot of colors. But what's nice about the graph, it's just the numbers are the same, the categories are the same. I'm not going to read all the numbers to you if you look at them, but visually what you see is that the big blue is green metal, the hot pink is powder, the gray is the high school, and the green and the light green and the dark green. That those in and of themselves make up, you can tell, you know, 85, 90% of that entire high school. And then there are some other categories that we talked about. Perfect. Just again, it's another way to really look at the same numbers in terms of from 2021 through 2122, 2223 to the 2324 proposed. And now. Or not.
Not really.
Okay, that's, that's okay. Oh, it's just because of that. Now you can, you can probably see it online. I wasn't sure. So you can see the years across and how, and so those are divided. That's our budget. Same numbers, just divided by Department of Education function codes. So these are codes that our business manager, who we play right there, he lives by. This is how we have to share information with the state. And you can see codes, but it's all the same. It's just different ways to break it up. Say, let's administration, structural, it's other school services, plants and operations, maintenance, fixed costs, and payment to other schools.
Right. Thank you. Your, I know this is just something that we updated last year, and I think it's a good opportunity to reinforce how the school base in improving the budget and why this is being reflected this way. So the, our oversight, what we've gone through our own tree as through mask, is we allocate or we create what we call cost centers. And within those cost centers, are, we've actually chosen as a committee to adopt ones that were similar to the DOE codes for our own internal ease of operations. But the norm, they used to have four, four cost centers. It was not enough for oversight transparency. And so through the past couple of years, with recommendations from Wayne, Brian, and, and team, we brought more insight into this. So these are the areas where we have, we will approve at some point the numbers to allocate in there. When it gets to more of the line item budgets, which we do see and we get reports on, those are areas that are a little bit more outside of our control as to how much should be in. And this is all based on MGL. So it can be a little bit confusing sometimes when we look at, you know, how much is at what particular line and we certainly hear the recommendations of the superintendent and the operations. But that is where that oversight kind of that line is very, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public a little bit in this moment, because on this slide, it pictures it very well.
So perfect, great explanation. Thank you. All right. And again, these are budgets from 2021 up to the proposed 2324. And again, broken down by DOE function codes. So again, it's a school. This, and they're just a different way to look at same budget numbers. And then we look at ESSER funding, which is kind of interesting. We worked really hard and Wayne in particular has worked really hard to make sure that so ESSER was a really like a one time, even though it was, there was ESSER one, ESSER two, and ESSER three, as you see, and you can see their end dates of two, 2022, 2023, 2024. There was a lot of money. Schools are not used to getting unsolicited grants in million dollar, that, that's sort of, you know, sometimes, you know, I can ransom, but these are large amounts of money to support schools specifically through the debt. And one of the things that we were very cognizant of is keeping those monies separate from our operating budget. So even though what I'm saying level service, our level service, you know, is an accurate term, but we've got people, instruction staff, support staff that have been funded through ESSER that will in effect go away. And that's true for most districts. One of the things that we did well was we didn't co-mingle. So even though we made, you know, when people would like go with the same person, they were funded with this grant. I think we're not. So we don't have, we need financial cliff, if you will, that other districts like did co-mingle that.
And I have seen that in looking at other districts who are now trying to correct some of that. I think actually asked it, one of the reasons this year is because they moved something out of another fund and now they're trying to move it back into their operating budget. And so they have an increase 12%. I think their overall budget. So it's just interesting how, I think this has been a very responsible approach. Yeah, one, one of the newsletters that we received, actually the mask, I think the latest one, which is talking about how many school districts didn't do it the way that we did. Like Wayne, Brian, and they incorporated it out. As you say, they're going to be bought off, but.
Right. And so some of the things that we used it for, we don't spend a lot of time on this, but so you know, additional during the pandemic, additional custodial support, school counseling support, nursing support, and multi-tier assistance of support for students in terms of instructional support, building gaps, and a variety. But those are the main areas. So again, this recap from the very beginning. Very, all right. As I mentioned, the 22,455,77, our level service plus those two asks, the administrative support and the instruction support. It's just that have been historically what's been proposed and what we've done at the town administrator, what they're recommending in a 2.6% that I think people would recognize that that's low. It's well below the cost of living. That's not a sustainable increase to a school system trying to support all, you know, 1,200 students who would. Um, and again, this just says, so if we went with the level service budget, doesn't, those two positions, which it says, then we have to look, we, if we were just to get to 22, 229, which stop that idea and on, so require the staff of buildings. We that entertaining those, because we know that that's not what the Maynard Public School. And then we look at a couple of scenarios. How could we, can we get to that level service? Because that's kind of a bear. We know that. Or, so, so one scenario which, and again, these are scenarios they have not been agreed upon by select boards, school scenario for cells. But a scenario could be the town would put $7,000, the special education state income, which would come out of circuit breaker coverage this year that was given back to the town from the school system. And $250,000 back to the operating budget for next year, which was the remaining circuit breaker coverage that the school returns to the town. Then the school to close the remaining gap would decrease a 1.0, one standard number at Fowler. Use $50,000 out of our school choice funds, which there's a calculated risk there, and we use those funds for a variety of things significantly specifically maintenance is a big use of them. I'm sure there's a calculator. It still leaves some money in that account. But it's that, and school circuit breaker, which is a fund that offsets special education expenses. So again, we always use certain regular money. This would be earmarking $140,000 front to support the overall budget in terms of special education to get us to close that gap. And again, there's a calculated risk there, but it working with director of student support, business manager, the curriculum director. That's a scenario. And then a scenario B, which this is very, very similar, but it has more risk to the school. We are still confident that it's a possibility. Again, to get to that level service budget, the town would add $50,000 to a special education. Seven, five, nine, tie to our operating budget. And again, with quite Fowler. And again, so here's the school choice and the circuit breaker fund. See that they're just a little bit higher in school choice. And goes up $70,000 that we use. And again, you know, we do worry about that. But circuit breaker funds, the 283,000. And we have looked at school committee can attest to the fact that we've looked at, we looked at transportation fees, and we haven't gone down that path yet. But if we needed to, we would, you know, go down that path. So those are a couple of the scenarios at the end. The key message that I hope people hear is that we are really trying to be creative and work um, to get to a level service budget. Because that for us, that's our bare minimum. We know we need that level service to maintain. And we continue to grow in bits and pieces and later today and not very thoroughly. I feel hear from a couple of teachers who are example of how we've grown, you know, inch by inch by inch to, you know.
I'm, you just, two, two things, explain to people. For me to read them, because that keeps coming up. Why is, you know? Yeah, so if you wouldn't mind, just to understand, like, what, what is a breaker as to get back for it and one time that, you know, certain things that happened that created that, in fact, that we're not the only school system that it happened to.
Yes, well, the circuit breaker account is a state reimbursement program for special education expenses. The reimbursement begins once a district incurs four times what the average cost is for uh, special education costs. So because $100, you would have been heard $400, $100 in expenses, and then the state then determines based on the budget the percentage of reimbursement, and it usually floats anywhere from like 65 to 75% of reimbursement, depending on what the state budgets look like. And it usually goes anywhere from like sixty five to seventy five percent of reimbursement, depending on what the state budgets look like. Last few years, it's been above seventy percent, it's been about seventy three percent, something like that. So you can't predict that kind of ballpark, so it's a reimbursement and you don't get reimbursed on everything you have to. So the reimbursement doesn't rise as fast as your cost. And so districts use it because of funding, you never have enough money in your operating budget to cover all of your special education costs. And so you use a circuit breaker reserves to, to help supplement that. And you get reimbursed in a rear, so like this year, we're getting payments from last year and then next year we're getting payments for this year. And so you're allowed to carry forward one year's worth of reimbursements. So if in, if this year in reimbursements, if we get back one million dollars and I already had carried forwards of last year, say five hundred thousand, I now have one point five, but I can carry forward. And the next year, a billion, so I'd have to spin down that five hundred thousand. Well, the Department of Revenue came out with the announcement that there could be anticipated rise in tuitions, special education arena of as much as fourteen percent. And so I would imagine throughout the Commonwealth, people in my position, you're like, I want to pay for that because I'm not going to get fourteen percent from town. And so you try to retain as much circuit breaker money as you can. Well, I happen to retain, try to anticipate that more than that one year. And so got audited, they said, you're over your one year and that amount happened to be two hundred fifty seven thousand. And so it was give it to the town to put in free cash. Now, the thing is, like I said, I wasn't the only finance director thinking that way. Other towns were caught and from upstate and there were some towns with billions.
Yeah, Lexington, I think, was one that I recently. But then, I mean, there's other negotiating things, but the scenario product made out and it went back because this year is also looking like another high and just expense, how do we get the money that doesn't impact residents to raise that we can just kind of put back to the intent of what it's.
So finance director like me, you're like, I'd rather beg forgiveness than have to tell my superintendent I can't pay special education costs. And so that's, that's what happened. And so the town took off our books to two hundred fifty seven thousand dollars. So that's the number they're referring to, say, we could get that back because the town had no anticipation, they didn't know they're going to get that. So if you give it back to us, you know, it's kind of a net zero with you. That's, that's how we got where we don't.
That was our first hope was that we were just going to get that two hundred fifty seven. Solve the whole problem, but at least it would get us through this year.
Yes.
Um, I know I have just some discussion, but I wanted to get to the public comments part of the, are you, um, are you okay? Um, just for the, the hearing, and then I thought we could, we never talk amongst ourselves a little bit. So, um, I don't know if anyone wants to speak in the room? No, okay, um, if there's anyone online, nobody has signed up, that would like to speak on the budget. Oh, come on, both.
We have, no, that's her without the sign up link, I know, I did the same thing.
Um, okay, so I think we are either super thorough in the explanation, or we're going to get more questions after, and I think maybe we'll go back to us talking. And then we can circle back if there's any questions after that. If there are any questions for the public, we can, um, go back to answer a few, um, if we have time.
I also think that a lot of these people have seen this presentation, it has not changed that much.
Right.
The main thing that has changed is how are we going to fix the deficit?
Yeah. Um, so I guess to start off with, where there's been the past couple of weeks, we've, Mary has, we've attended finance committee meetings, select board meetings, conversations in our town as a whole are, are, are challenging, to say the least, because there's a, a revenue concern, water and all these other dynamics for me that are going on. And so we, uh, engaged to see how can we get maybe that two hundred and fifty seven thousand circuit breaker back? That was, um, something that we were in support of superintendent engaging with the town, the town administrator as well. That was not something that the select board received and decided to act on in, in its instead on the scenario two. Um, Colleen, I don't know if you can pull up the scenario on there. That might be. And so at this point, this is where the we stand from a town perspective that the select board agreed to take fifty thousand dollars and they were that from free cash into a special education stabilization account, which does allow us to expense from that, it provides transparency. And it does require, though, a vote of the select board and the school committee, so it's not a very fast utilized account. It hasn't been more steps, but albeit an option. Um, in addition to that, the select board recommended that the school would receive an additional eight seven thousand five hundred and ninety nine dollars to the operating budget. And so based on, that is what has been, is now sitting finance committee, they, they met with them on and they deliberated, they have thoughts and next week they're going to do some recommendations on what, um, we did ask the select board, I mean, the finance committee to not recommend that proposal and hope that they would reject and maybe propose or recommend that two fifty seven in the entirety would come back to the school, which would then allow us to, um, lessen the reliance on school choice funds. And, um, the concern there with the school choice bonds as well. And I think it's important to note is that we are getting to a town, we're getting less income for school choice. So if we're expensing towards it more and we're getting less in, that is our only kind of reserve account that we can use for maintenance and other things. Um, the other part too with that is that whatever amount larger we expense from school choice, we have to then build that back into our operating budget in the next year. It's kind of like that cliff with S R, like you, you rely on it once. But those are still operating expenses that we're going to have to bring back into our operating budget at some time. We can't rely on that for ongoing operational needs, um, expending it when the monies are just not coming in to that level. The other concern is peg access, and this comes up, this is something that we need to be aware of. Um, the amount of money that are coming in for peg access, that is what helps fund W A V M. Um, in twenty twenty five, it looks like there's going to be some changes in the contract for Verizon. And there could be less money, so that means that we have to then incorporate the staff that are funded from PEG, which is our W A V M program into our operating budget in some capacity to rely less on those monies because that, so that's a lot to build in. So we're talking like if not F Y twenty four, F Y twenty five looks instrument, starting off, and that's not even level service yet, no. So that's, that's the part that's really fun to grasp there. So, um, Mary, I don't know if you, I mean, you've attended some meetings and, um, I don't know if you had any feedback.
Yeah, the main feedback is one of the first slides that we saw that showed that this isn't a one year type of scenario, that this has been going on for years. And it's hit, it's hit the wall at this point, um, and this, um, we've been told to stop planning on an increase on an annual basis of two and a half percent, which not sustainable for any of the departments actually, but especially for, um, for the schools. Um, if we had had somewhere between four and a half and five percent every year from, I don't know, I think back five years, we wouldn't be have to be asking for such an increase now, but it's just because it's accumulative. And, um, and now we've really hit that all place.
Uh, and one other thing I wanted to bring up in the, in the context, I know we're going to talk about it later on in the agenda about the article, because it kind of, we have, the school committee had, uh, approved an article to present a town meeting. Um, recognizing where our town is, uh, we, we obviously feel as a school committee that we should be for level service, it doesn't, I would never say in my right mind that I would say I'm going to advocate for less money than level service. As a school committee member, that doesn't make sense. So that is, I think our collective passion has been like, we cannot take steps back. We should be getting at a minimum level service and that is the intent behind the article that we put forth for a town meeting. However, recognizing that there is some compromise sometimes, we had discussed, well, if we can get the two fifty seven back, we can maybe find a way to bring us beyond F Y twenty four, at least, and then look at F Y twenty five and then like that level of compromise does not seem to be welcomed. Uh, I think the comment that was made to us at the meeting was, that sounds like extortion. So, uh, I thought it was funny, that it was, you know, a way to, um, you know, how we're trying to compromise and how do you find a way forward? But it doesn't seem that that is being reciprocated, um, in the same way or received in the same way. So in any case, that's where we find ourselves. And I think that the, the two things that we, we talked about, I know we sent over the transportation, there's a couple of things we looked at. Um, at, yeah, the bus fees right now, the way major, uh, hold up, just so we can understand, oh, Hillary, I don't know if Hillary, um, do you, do you have some questions? I didn't see that you think I hand up, but I wanted to make sure that you.
No, right now, I'm good.
Um, so I think right now it's just a matter of talking about where do we find ourselves, what are, what are we looking at? We had some of the bus fees I looked at and I showed them, uh, they look like we're, we have potential wiggle room to increase them. What I think most of the bus fees are looking like in other towns, they're doing a couple of different things. There are actually, some towns are saying, if you live within one mile, they don't offer service at all, like for fee or not fee. And then they have a fee after one mile. So I don't know if that would be something that would be taking away services? Or do we look and say like, we would like the services to continue, but is there room to increase in some grand, you know, some way, whether it's, um, you know, a cap, we have a cap on the family that might allow, because there are transportation fees, I think, I mean, they're just generating some expense that's going up. Um, it's not a huge amount that it would impact, but it might allow for less reliance on the operating budget or, um, or school choice, I don't know. I don't have any other suggestions or thoughts, how did you feel about that?
Yeah, I'm not overly keen on, on our parents. Um, to get real estate tax and then they have expenses that other people aren't even aware that they're paying. So, and it would have to be pretty significant, not a lot of keen on the parents' part, but significant enough for us to make it worth, worth that fee.
Yeah, I think, uh, pull up where the.
Natasha, can I say something?
Please.
Um, so one of my concerns with using the bus fees to, um, basically help, because if, if the, the budget as a whole is the whole town's budget. And if we need to charge residents extra money to make up for the budget deficits, I don't like the idea that that deficit would be charged to parents of young kids. Like, if there's, if there has to be cuts, if there has to be increased fees, if the budget, if we're all pulling from the same pot, the impact should face everybody equally among the town residents and not parents with young kids who are having all sorts of extra expenses every year anyway. But also, I think that this is something where we would need residents to really understand that that's part of the, um, coming to town meeting and expressing where the priorities do lay. If people are okay with cutting the school budget it by, and you know, the consequences like increasing bus fees to do that, increasing activity fees, cutting other programming, then that's a choice to vote for the select board budget. If they'd prefer that the town deficit be spread out among departments more evenly, so there's less of an impact to their students, then they need to come and vote for the school committee motion. Like, I think that we need input from residents on really where they want, the town as a whole is facing these deficits, where do we want to pull from?
Um, I think those are, that's very, very important too, because I think that's what got us to the point of the level service and really saying if it gets to a point five hundred thousand dollars is, is, is huge. And I think that should be a town decision. If we're going to be saying, look at all of our priorities as a town, it's a service. Do we feel that we, um, are okay with the town saying, you know, we got to cut the school budget, if we're going to accept that we're doing less services? That should be a town decision, I don't think it should be a town administrator decision or a select board decision. I think the town should weigh all their priorities or look at, you know, water, look at the free cash. However, the town wants to decide to allocate that money, I think it's important the town be able to weigh in on what they think their money should be prioritized. Um, and, you know, we accept, you know, the will of the town in that way. So, um, I, I agree, I'm right with, with that, so, Mary, I don't know if you have any thoughts to add on that. Um, I think that's all we have to talk about because we'll be, uh, the next meeting, we're going to be voting. But I wanted to kind of circle back again to residents to see or anyone who, see if anyone now has any other questions before we close the public hearing.
I'd really love to hear from some of the residents about their thoughts, because I think we're sort of guessing what people want. Um, and it'd be great to hear from people about what they want. And for the select board, if you can come to hear it as well.
So I, I will just then put one other plea, if anyone wants to send an email, um, you know, to us or to the select board or to finance committee, the finance committee will be doing their recommendations on the articles at their next meeting, I think it's next Monday. So if there are residents, staff, teachers, whoever, students want to share their feelings, please do so um, to help inform, um, their, their views as well. So thank you very much. Um, and with, with that, I think we'll go ahead and, um, close the public hearing. All right, so I, that we closed the public hearing. A second, okay, uh, roll call at Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Bradley? Pat Traver, yes. All right. And now we are going to, this is where it gets a little different, we are going to, um, go to any, well, any other public comments, I think, for regular business. And we may not have any from email, so move on, um, urgent business, right? Okay, uh, student representative report.
Hi, I didn't know if I could unmute myself yet, sorry.
That's okay, welcome.
Yeah. Um, do you want me to just get right into it?
Please, welcome.
Okay, so first we have our highlights, we just had our food sampling, it's our first, our first food sampling. We had three different options passed around at lunch on Tuesday, I want to say. And students shared their opinions in a survey, which we will be bringing to the staff at the cafeteria. And next we have our peer leaders egg hunt, they raised over a thousand dollars for earthquake relief in Turkey. And next we have a new segment or part called the senior projects, and it's going to be for the next two months where we go over the seniors' projects and what they're doing. So first we have Rachel Fisk's performance. She had a performance for students of M H S to show them what M H S offers for music. So we had a performance from a cappella, the jazz band and several solo students being Alavero Gonzalez, Gabe Royan and Rachel herself. Next we have Si and Soli's senior project, which is ditch your device. They are asking for students to ditch their phones for a day. And in return, they get their name put in a raffle and four students can win fifty dollars. And hopefully this will help make M H S a better learning environment in the future. And our next part is the concerns and solutions. First, we have improving the transition from Fowler to M H S. So we will So we will be exploring or exposing students more to MHS in the eighth grade through update. Um, more than we have in the past. So we are hoping to involve student with, students with current students in the building. And build their relationships before they make the turn to MHS. And we had our Alice show this week, which did go well, most of the building evacuated. But there were concerns with just some communications in parts of the building, like the gym. I know the equipment room, you couldn't hear the announcements. So we now have walkie talkies in there and other spaces so students can hear. And our upcoming events are obviously April break, which we're very excited for. The Disney trip and the Deca trip. And that's all we have for you guys today.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, Mary, did you have any?
Yeah, I just, I had a question, Rachel, the, um, the, when is the update for the eighth grade to come up? Is the date set?
Um. I'm not sure because. It might be on the same day every year, but my grade didn't get it because of COVID. So I'm not a hundred percent sure. If Aiden is there, he might know, but.
It's curious, curious is because the. Students will be deciding whether to go to Assavet or to go to the high school. So I was wondering if it was before their deadline or that, so that students can see. How much MHS has to offer.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's before then, because that's probably our goal is for students to come to MHS. So.
Thank you, thank you. And the, um, the Deca trip, I think Aiden's the one that can speak to this because the, um, on the end foundation and I know, um, that, um. Um, that the guys did, they did great, you guys did phenomenal. And then Aiden, you're going to nationals, right? So congratulations on that. Two years in, it's pretty. As everything is, yeah. So I've been to high school everywhere, but very proud of you guys. That's it, thank you.
Um, Hillary, did you have any questions or?
I just want to say how impressive that is, all the money raised with Icon, that's really fabulous. And I'm so excited for you guys.
Thank you.
I don't have anything just to say, uh, you know, thank you for, for everything that you're, you're doing. I, I. Really love the level of engagement that the, uh, the school council is, is bringing, the student council is bringing to our, our committee. To directly, which has been wonderful, especially after COVID. And so I just think you guys have done a great job. Um, and so kudos and. I know we're going to see you before vacation, so hope you enjoy it with your patients as well.
You guys too.
And I actually do have one question, um. I know we've heard a little bit before, but since we had a budget conversation, is there anything that you have heard just tonight that you'd want to hear more about or, um. You know, concerning or things that, that we could share a little bit more as a group.
Um. I would say, I know when we went to the first budget meeting, a lot of us were concerned about extracurriculars being cut. And the buses were. Not a big question, but we did talk about it a little after the budget meeting. So probably the staffing, the extracurriculars and the buses.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, you're welcome to always stay and hang out with us, otherwise, you know, enjoy the rest of your evening.
You too, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Um, so Brian, it looks like now we're on to the superintendent report.
Great. I mean, if you want to pull that up for us, if you'd like to. Have to see, um. One of the things that's happening at the schools right now, just to treat the district are with, uh, staying interviews. So I cut out to the staff about typically you hear about exit interviews for people and if somebody's going to leave their job, they need the human resources, they have. Often I don't know that, I, I think, uh, we don't get the best quality of information because people are. Just often. Uh, the concept of a stay. Is really to find out why people like come in to work, what might make it better, and if they were going to leave, why would they? So I summarize that with staff and put it out there to say, hey, we're getting a conversation. So I have about fifty or so, um, staff between paraprofessionals and teachers. Secretaries, administrators of the variety of people, um, to sit down and have a conversation about that. So basically, plus of that, I've met with about fifty people. Uh, probably, uh, thirty five or forty so far. And it's great in a multitude of levels, really just getting to know the people in the staff a little bit better. Um, and you have much better conversations, I will say, in a sit down half hour than. Really, like, yes, I don't necessarily just run the instruction, what's going on. And you're not going to have that conversation about how long you've been here and what you love about it here. Uh, and then so the goal of that is to then identify trends in terms of what's really good. Love, and then what can make it better, and then identify some short term changes. So that's happening now.
When do you think that we would be hearing more about? Those, it's not like you find a bitch, I'm so excited, by the way, and people are, they're open to this. Okay.
I definitely have. Uh, we have four more days, um, half days of interviews, have four so far. And I will say, I'm glad you said that, because I, I think it's fear of life with this out there. And I get credit. Yeah, I like, oh gosh, I don't know what to eat, but no, people were very excited.
We, yeah, we, we've got to stop now. How some people tell that they've never been asked about their, and they're in that way, which is, I think, very telling and, um. Also sad in a way, but that, but not. But they feel energized to be able to share honestly. Um, so you know, just thank you. For bringing that opportunity to, to everyone.
I think it speaks to you, Brian, that you're approachable, that people feel like, you know, they're comfortable sitting down with you.
So I'd like to think so, but it's like. A fair amount of people will walk in and say, I am really scared to have a single view. And they are, I, I don't.
You should just show them your basketball from last week, maybe like soccer.
After you see the game, you realize that the last time I touched the basketball, it didn't ask you at the beginning. The ball did not go into the hoop when I touched it. They, they. Absolutely. Uh, dream matter, we're still meeting and frequently asked questions have been shared. And that will be continuously updated and we're getting very close to submitting schematic design. It's been shared with many, so more.
Nice question about that, I, I know, uh, because it, it's come up a couple of times with the select board meeting this week as well. And I know we had the information circulated, um. Is there an opportunity, and, and I'm, I'm sure this is maybe, if this could be one of the decisions, or maybe it is already that I'm not close to. That there would be. Pumps that are not geothermal, like is there that other opportunity that was?
That's in the minutes.
Right, okay.
So there are three options.
Okay.
And they all have.
Right, right, okay, but that one is still one of the options that are being on the table, we think, thought about as well, okay, okay.
So I'm going to sort of take away, calling you love this, we're going to stop, I. Because one of the things in my report has to be the high school, we have staff and student and a student here to talk about the Germany, Germany exchange program. So if you do swap presentations, anyone have Jenny Adams and Mark Snopely. Talk about this and ask for. Approval from school.
Oh, absolutely, yes. So we'll, we'll move on to that. Yeah, see, the rest, super important. The mainer high school, a Germany exchange program.
Um, Jen Adams, been teacher at new school. Steve McCollum, Mark Snopely.
Yeah, they can, I think, um, can hear, uh, Hillary, can you hear? Maybe get closer.
Yeah, so.
Great, so we wanted to just introduce this program and give you some of the background of it and our safety plans for doing it, Brian. So until we have a real life, we have this student here is going to answer, so that, well, it is done. But his involvement has been so far, so. Um, you have to answer any questions that you have as well afterwards.
Okay, so I'll start with the, uh, German American partnership program. Um, this is sponsored by the GoToInstitute, which does have an office in Boston. This is their fiftieth year anniversary, actually, of running the program. And the gap program is sponsored in part by the US State Department as well as the federal foreign office in Germany. It's the. You need to know that, I don't know Chuck's a German scholar there. Um, what they do is they help support the connections between American schools and German schools. They, um, they provide personnel to talk to each other, coordinate that, they help authorize resources to help fund it. Um, there is, um. Lots of cultural activities that they try to sponsor and, um. That's about it.
So the history of how we got to be involved in this in April, I think Chuck was in, was contacted by the school in Germany. They had been doing an exchange. Several years, um, back and forth with the school in Tennessee, and that town was no longer all that supportive. Unfortunately for those students, but fortunately for us, they found us online because we already have an exchange. So they saw that we have one, they reached out and, um, so we started getting in touch with the teachers there. Gap Institute or the Gap Program provides a lot of support in getting teachers to know how to do this. So. I was able to attend some webinars. I went to a workshop in March, um, a two day workshop where I. Got lots more information and was really happy to see that even though it's our first time that we're. We're right, we're ahead of most, almost everybody else at the, um. At the workshop that I attended in terms of, we already know what we're doing, you've already got a plan, and you've already made matches, that you have our. Travel dates and everything. So we're far ahead of where some school, a lot of schools are. Uh, that even have German programs. So we're right into it, ready to go. So we opened this up to main and base school students, any student was able to. Express interest. Um, and then we had a deadline, so we ended up with twelve students, which was perfect, or eleven main and base school students. Which was perfect for match school as well. It's a good amount, got each two teachers on each side going, so. It's a great amount of, um, chaperone student ratio. Um, the program through the gap. Um, organization requires that you stay with. The families, the, the match families for at least ten days and that you're in school at least five days. So they have minimum requirements. And then in addition, you do field trips in each place. So we're going to be there for. Total, um, so a little more than two weeks and we'll be. Staying with the host families and doing all kinds of cultural. Trips and excursions while we're there and involve, and be involved in activities at the school. We're going to be doing, the students will be doing, um, presentations while they're there in the school's English classes. And we're also working on a joint project between students in Germany, the students in. Um, already, so we've got the dates up on the board. When we're leaving, we'll be leaving June twelfth and they'll be coming in October because they want to be here for Halloween. So that's what was driving their pace. Uh, yeah, so in there, you know, a little bit longer, they have, um, they have to be there from, from their side of, of the program. They have to be here for at least three weeks. So that's what I'm here for. Um, the cost and estimate for the airfare is. About twelve hundred dollars, which is the minimum that Gap, um, mentions or recommends to plan for. Between that twelve hundred and three thousand for some of them. So where you're applying tickets, that's pretty much how much it is. Um, and we'll be giving some more information on that. We've applied for funding, so you will be hearing probably next week about the funding. The, I anticipate, and they've been told, they've told us that we'll have about fifty five dollars per student, I think it's about three hundred dollars shop airfare, so. That's going to greatly reduce the costs. Um, on that end, and then we were able to apply for some other individual grants for students. So students were given the opportunity to do that. We wrote recommendations and submitted that, and so they should be there and. Soon the grants from Gap this year are a thousand dollars per student. That is awarded that.
That's, um, something that I didn't mention before is that the school is actually, um, in Ingelheim, Germany, this is just outside of Mainz. So for anybody who's familiar with. IGS is meeting behind the Sash real line. But anyway, so the program that we're going to be running is going to be similar to some of the established Spanish stage programs that Jen has, you know, very definitely led in the past. Um, so this is my first time ever doing anything that's change oriented, although I've been to Germany, so I was, and I think that's how I got attached to the.
Yeah.
So I want to talk a little bit about, um, what we've been doing already. So we've already been having some meetings with the students, you know, after school, um, we were able to have one Zoom meeting. But at this point, I'd like to have Aiden come up and he can just talk about some of the experiences he's had, um, with the program because. One thing that's, that maybe is different about this program is that. Um, Ms. Adams and I have participated with the shepherds in Germany to match students together. So each side, you know, Germany, US students, we, they, well, they thought on application. We look through the application and we look for common interests. Um, as well as preferences for this boy, one boy, girl, or girl, or does it matter? And we try to do our best to match, um, them together. So that's what matching is, but it's.
It's like a pin count, I guess.
Well, and that's what happened was we, uh, we made the opportunity available for students to, to communicate with each other, and that's what Aiden's been talking about.
Yeah, so, uh, the gender. For each schools are a little different. So like, for example, I have a girl and because I have a younger sister, that's why I have her own, she's a forcing old girl, actually. But we, you should buy social media probably five times a week. Um, like Mr. Snobly said, we already had a meeting with them as a group in a classroom, but we've also done video calls with just the students who've had presentations about.
Also talked to the parents, met the parents.
Not yet, but we are planning on that.
What about the scavenger?
Well, so Ian just mentioned that, um, so because this is a new exam for ourselves, what we tried to do was. It's hard to get a good feeling like a parent with, um. How is my kid doing with? You know, making friends with their, their parent. So we came up with the idea to have a scavenger hunt where the students had to put together a presentation that only had photos. And then they would get together and, you know, on social media, I won't explain that, but. Share the presentation and then you show a slide and then.
Well, we call it, or scavenger hunts. It was more like, like, here's those things, like, fine, you find.
Yeah. Aiden could find, like, you spray the restaurant in Mayor and then you show it.
Oh.
And you'd either talk about it.
So that can, it builds interest of like what you're, where you're from to other.
Um, because, you know, the, the gap program is about the cultural exchange, it's about learning what is it like somewhere? You know, and there was, there was one time when we had a, um, a meeting. The, uh, the train strike was going on in Germany. And I was about to ask you about this, but I was asking Aiden how he was going to get to school. And he said, well, with my match, we're going to ride a bike to the train station. Has that affected your match or?
Is there anything surprising through those, um, scavenger hunts or presentations that was like interesting, like, oh, like, just how. Their culture, they maybe do on a big basis or.
The scavenger hunt actually was, I didn't think. Um, obviously there are many.
I remember students saying, you know, my match lives on a farm and has lots of animals. Which, out in this area, you might have chickens in this area, but. Not like there.
Um, I, I'm going to have some questions, but I realized we interrupted the presentation.
Well, the, the last thing is that, um, so when the students are over there, um, you know, we don't have German program here. It's a German school, obviously. Um, so our students will be participating in some introductory German classes. But they will also be making presentations about topics in the US. Some of which are our own creation, but they're also geared toward what do German students want to learn about here. And when we have Zooming. You know, all the, our counterparts in Germany all said, oh, we want to learn about, you know, sports in Boston, because we know so much about it. Or we want to learn about history, or we want to learn about food. Or we want to learn about history, or we want to learn about food. So and that's all, I'll start pre-presentations we're going to give. The students have some leeway with the topics they're going to be doing. So that's the presentation portion. And then one of the other goals of the Gap program is to come together with some type of common project they work on. And there's lots of different ideas. And we talked some in our past meetings about using communication. As we have the radio shows here, we have the new production, WAFM. There's a lot of students who are going on a trip or having new shows. So we're going to try to find some way to use, to have some kind of communication project with them.
So the relationships to the strategic plan include that if this is an inclusive trip, this is an inclusive opportunity, students could join, not based on what language you study, just a cultural exchange, not based on grades or GPAs or anything like that. There's a lot of support they can, with the project that they're, the presentations that they have to do, they can pick the way that they're going to do it, how they're going to involve in it with support from us as well. We've been sharing them or sharing with them like an outline of what they need to do. And then they come out, so they, they have support to be successful for that. We have a meeting with them Monday, we're going to go through what they've done so far for the presentations, give them feedback and help them kind of finalize those so that they're ready to present all kinds of new people who can get to, to Germany. So it's also, I think, inclusive because of the cost. We have, as I was mentioning, we're at the bottom of what Gap recommends for cost. It's very relatively variable to Germany for over two weeks for just a little more than $1,000 minus any, any kind of funding that we might get. So that, I think the funding has been helpful. I've always said when we have trips to come out and if there, don't let money be a thing because we have some funds from exchange students that we can use for that. So that's also advertised to students. Anytime that we're going to be starting a trip like that, if that makes it accessible and equitable. Definitely, they're developing, they're as local citizens invested every way possible, every single minute of every day, being immersed in another culture, learning to be flexible, learning to have to problem solve on their own with support from us, but not with their parents there. So they're going to need to maybe in an uncomfortable situation, figure out. They'll feed the host families and they'll have support from us as well. And teachers that met them at least online. But, but they're going to be growing immensely from this. I need to start keeping track of how many students to exchanges and then just keep traveling because it's probably most important.
Nice, like a passion.
Absolutely. Yeah, already from the Spain exchange this year, I have students going back to Spain. Like, they've already bought the tickets, they're already going. And they just came back a little more than a month ago. So it just, it just goes so far with them in terms of what they do after that. Yeah, budget.
Yeah, so some of the budget implications are just, you know, things that are already in the teacher contract about, you know, the overnight chaperone situation. There, as mentioned before, there is some funding from Gap, sort of like a little bit of baseline funding based on how many students you have in the program to having the scholarships that, you know, that suspension. So the revenue source, I think you also mentioned, was that with the exchanges that we get in an ordinary way, there's a, there's some money and then you know, fun there. When the families come over though, what happens is if there's a school filter, then the school will be helping out to pay for those field trips. But also if there's a weekend and a family decides to do some type of personal private trip, then that family needs to care about. We're also likely going to have some type of welcome farewell events for when it comes. We still don't have the firm schedule of, you know, how they're, how they're getting here and everything. And I believe they're going to be touring Philadelphia before the PNCs. So these are things that I do, I think, because I was mentioning before that the Spanish exchange, you know, a one-week trip. And we're going to have, we'll be hosting this for about three weeks. And it's going to be close to the same cost, it's just going to spread out something.
So we'll be doing field trips at the Spain exchange. What we pay for, for their trips and their excursion down here, and if we go over there, their school pays for all of ours. So it's going to be a similar kind of process between the two schools. So if we do, like we were saying, like, we'll have about the same amount of field trips, be one or two a week to see local areas, local history, something like that, all together that are educational. And the school will need to cover the cost of that. I always work to find good prices on things, but I really want to make this a experience because they'll be bringing us to like a castle. You can't compete with that. But, but we'll be doing some, some really cool things that are unique for them when they come here. And then parents parents and families will, will be doing, covering a lot of the costs on their own. So the host families will need to provide food every day. Families are families there, say, if we do, like, if they take a trip into Boston, and they'll cover the cost of the tea, they're going same. So any of those kinds of extra things that we do. So that's something to kind of keep in mind. Possibly if we had a family that wanted to participate, that couldn't come up with the cost for that.
As you can imagine, having this program added to what we already have is really going to increase the reputation of what we're doing at the high school. Okay, you know, one of our parents, his son is doing it because he said, I went to Germany when I was in school and it was awesome. You know, I'm so glad that my son has the chance to do this. The students get the opportunity to, you know, go to Germany and they get to be in there, you know, maybe more so than some of the Spanish trips. But, you know, I'm looking forward to the trip as well to see the growth that our students will have. And so just as a follow-up, as we, you know, prepare for going over there, we want to try to document what we're doing so that we can share this with the community, whether it's having students do, you know, presentations to other groups, to having a website, to doing a news release. We really want to articulate what we're doing so that everybody understands what's going on and everybody can support each other and hopefully get support from the whole.
That's our plan.
I love the fact that it's ninth through 11th grade. You know, it's the younger kids, even 30.
Well, when we first, you know, Ms. Adams first pitched it to me, we couldn't offer it to seniors because they're graduating by the time our counterparts come over. So that's why.
Hillary, I wanted to know if they see, you had any questions or thoughts?
Hi. First, thank you for making it so inclusive. I really appreciate that with such a great program that can be open to all the kids. My questions were, are the kids, when the Maynard kids go to Germany, is the family that they're staying with the same student that's going to be staying with them when they come back? Okay. Sorry, I missed that, sorry.
Obviously, they already have already met online or on video for now. And then they'll develop this relationship more because they'll be going over there and staying with the same family.
Great. What kind of betting is there for the families, like, for a parent to trust that the family in home they're staying in in Germany is safe and vice versa?
Yeah, so we do core checks on all of the adults living in the home here. And they have a similar thing with their local police department that they're going to be doing.
Thank you.
Anything else, Hillary?
No.
Mary? So the students, when they're over there, are they all going to be in the same classroom or they are all spread out?
They're going to be, it's going to depend on the day because they'll be doing presentations in groups to some English classes. So on those times, they'll be together. Other times, they'll be shadowing their host student. So they'll be following their schedule.
And then when the students come here, I mean, I know everywhere else in the world, it seems as though English is second, automatic second language. So I know our students aren't going to have a problem over there because everybody speaks English. But coming here, I guess the students would be insane. It's the, it'll be
Yeah, they would pick their top English students to participate because our students don't have German language. So they're picking the students.
So I'm just so grateful to you, Jen, to the longevity of the program as it has developed, but also Matt for taking us on to it. It's just, it's just phenomenal. Such an amazing, amazing opportunity for the kids.
So yeah, thank you, thank you both. And I think that, again, I appreciate you bringing your way enhances the experience of maybe also sharing, sharing that with everyone. My questions, I did have a couple of questions. One of them was about the language piece that comes to, or just thinking about who to, I mean, don't take a lot, say, how, zero. How do we consider the cultural opportunity that they might be able to do if maybe they're not able to really do a language on a local basis?
Yeah, so with this, there isn't like, you have to take X amount of years, obviously, in German. So the students that they're staying with know that these students haven't necessarily studied German. So we're just targeting the students, do all they know, they do as much as they can on their own. But they're going to be staying with students whose English is pretty good, so.
Yeah, our, our students are, as far as I know, taking Spanish or French. I don't know if anybody is not sent it home. There's one who's up in lunch, so.
I just know that these are just great, the cultural, the societal, which piece is just really beneficial. And so I, I know that as we've expanded these programs, which I think bring up the emphasis with the language piece, how do, just to be considered or how we can consider that the students that they don't, because they trouble with language, just from a learning or as well. So that would be the only, the emphasis on language learning skills is maybe not emphasized as much more than cultural.
This is a cultural exchange for us. For them, it's an English, right, English.
And then you mentioned earlier about they found us in an exchange. How does that?
They found us, I guess, online. I think they were looking for another school because the school that they had been to consistently with was no longer going to be able to do it. So
Okay.
Yeah, it was just one time. Exchange program.
Wow, I like that this fact is just amazing from someone looking from So I think that's amazing. So I don't have any other questions. I think the budget part was one that I know we account. So if there's hardships or is that leverage in those situations or that we pay for these activities that like field trips or? So thank you, thank you both.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think the next step will be to vote. Yeah, we do have to vote. So I think we, I think that we improve our exchange program from June 12 to June 28. Okay, all right. Any further discussion, Hillary?
Oh. Yes, of course.
Mary Riley?
Absolutely. And Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
So motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Aiden, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
You don't have to stay.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I think now we'll go back to the superintendent report.
Go back to that. Page three. So yeah, just to acknowledge the follower students. We have the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. Class B, great students. Great program, the feeder program to the National Honor Society. Nice to celebrate. And I think it's already been mentioned, we have a fundraiser, we've met our reserves. They were very giving and it was a lot of fun. And I don't know yet. All of us, that was great, but it And then last thing here, actually, Colin wants this one. My report to another before has to do with the Student Opportunity Act, which Karen, Jen, it's the center of taking one.
The district receives grant funding from DSC. And in exchange of that funding, we file an annual Student Opportunity Act progress report on how we're doing. These funds are dedicated to closing gaps, learning gaps, and as demonstrated through webcast primarily, for student groups targeted by the district for support. The groups target for including low-income, economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities and English learner and former English learner students. In this year's report, we were able to show that in terms of strengths that Maynard High School from 2019 to 2022 cut wording gaps in half in English language arts with the groups targeted or supported, increasing their score by 8.8 points, which is a huge number. In that, at Maynard High School, gap for the targeted group were also cut in half. The point rise there was 15.4 over the three-year period. We saw similar growth in science at the high school. We saw a similar growth in grades six, seven, eight. So our targeting efforts, those gaps, I would term highly successful for grades six through 12. And we also, through this grant, some of the funding allowed us to implement a new literacy curriculum, CKLA. And we could also show that there were something like three dozen or a little more than three dozen implement, implementation metrics that we had to comment to the state. While we've fully implemented well over half of the metrics, the remaining metrics have been partially implemented with several more. We'll reach full implementation next year. In fact, by next year, we may have full implementation across the board. So we've definitely put a big emphasis on literacy in the earlier grades. We did note in grades three, four, and five, and this is why we're targeting a literacy efforts there. Students actually showed declines in their MCAS scores from 2019 to 22. Those drops were consistent with state drops. So it wasn't unusual compared to the state. It was unusual compared to the rest of our grades, which showed large growth. I think the reason for that, if you're, if you think about it, children who were taking MCAS in grades three, four, and five last year had two years of major disruption due to COVID, right when kids are typically learning to read. So it's not surprising that we're going to see particular impacts to students that young. Whereas our students who are older, even sixth, seventh, and eighth graders had at least gotten through that sort of learning to read and had transitioned to reading to learn. So they're very cognizant that students who are in those very early grades during the pandemic are going to need additional support for several years. We did acknowledge also that we need to have continued staff training in university design. We've had quite a bit of work in that area this year. There's been actually extensive training, but it has not been, again, fully implemented. But it's well underway. We continue to have a relationship with Novak Associates. And the state has actually assigned a person to the district. They do this with all the districts receiving grant funding. A person to the district. They do this with, uh, all the districts receiving grant funding. So it's not that Maynard was. Selected in any special way, but we actually have a consultant. With us who's, uh, helping write a report on our implementation and that report will yield recommendations. Uh, for further improvement. So we were also working that person. Right now, we should have that report in hand by late May or early June. We also acknowledge that although we've taken big steps in the last, I would say, five years. Uh, bringing tier two and tier three intervention programs onboard. They're not as polished and ironed out as we would like them to be. So we want to continue to, to strengthen interventions when students. Do, uh, need additional support. And we also want to just. Improve our tier one instruction across the board all the time. I think that's in the continuous improvement. I said, uh, that we could always be the best better. Um, we also have acknowledged that school leaders, uh, including our coaches and central office people and building leaders. We could all also benefit from, uh, increased, uh, training around being responsive, particularly around, uh. Linguistic skills, uh, of students, uh. To really, um, support our EL students in particular, uh, that, that even the administrative team. Will benefit by additional training there. Uh, we're already taking steps to, uh, increase time on learning for EL newcomers in particular. Uh, that's being addressed through scheduling, uh, modifications at our schools. Um, we have, we're in the process of creating a parent advisory council for our EL students. Our time liaison has been hired to help with that work. We are targeting professional development, uh, to assist, to, uh. Uh, support training for our staff to work with, uh, high needs students in particular. Uh, again, that's through UDL and some, some of the CKLA training. Uh, and we're using contracted provider professional partner groups to assist in assessment of learner needs. Academically and socially emotionally, uh. The partnership we recently formed with UMS Lowell, uh. Where we have completed a survey, uh, with our students that have an eighty-eight percent participation rate. We just, uh, this week completed a, uh, survey, uh, again, uh, sponsored by UMO. With our staff and had about, uh, close to a ninety percent response rate there. Uh, we're very excited this coming Monday, uh, our student data upload will have been completed and, uh. Uh, the administrative team and some of our guidance counselors are going to get a very first look at the data and the data dashboard that's been created for us. And how to use the data dashboard to analyze the student results. Um, we can disaggregate. Data, um, however, we can disaggregate data if, uh, if the target group is smaller than fifteen members, so. With, with, without tasks. So the, the reason for not disaggregating. Lower than that number is, uh, inferentially, you can start to figure out who students are. So that way, even inferentially, you can't say, we think it was these few kids who responded in this way. Cause we absolutely are maintaining student confidentiality. The district. Because of UMS Lowell being a third party, uh, the district does not. Receive information on how any student responded to the survey. Uh, in fact, UMS Lowell, when, when they look at our student surveys, the responses, uh. They use data fields to, to determine things like socioeconomic status. Fields they do not draw down and move the student's names. They, they, they know that there's a student ID number, but no name or address. Um, they aggregate the data using, uh, other fields in, in the data system. So we know that the student is female or male, uh, or, or non-binary. Um, we know that the student is an EL student perhaps, but we don't know their name, address or anything else. When they send the data back to us, we get the. Data back and they even then make sure that the ID numbers are stripped out, said, uh, redacted. So the district has zero knowledge of how any student responded. And ultimately, once the data dashboard is completely uploaded and it's been double checked for accuracy. Uh, UMS Lowell then, uh, erases the student data completely. Um, so the confidentiality factor is off the charts. In fact, our uploads and downloads are through. Uh, industry level servers using state of the art encryption, uh, like high, like bank level encryption. So our student data, even without names and addresses, like it, it is. Um, really locked up. Um, so. We've used providers like this because we really want to know how, how do our teachers and staff members and how do our students feel? Uh, in school around things like safety, um. There are questions about grit. There are questions about perceptions of, uh. How, uh, students are treated, uh, based on other factors like race or economic status. Um, so we, we don't want mushy data that says we're pretty good. Cause when you kind of have a mushy survey that says, how are you doing? It almost always says pretty good. Right? From like that, in this type of survey, if it were to turn out that. Female students at the Fowler School or female students at the high school have a certain feeling in a certain area. We'd be able to say, that's something we need to work on. Because even though the group in general feels pretty good, there's a subgroup of our kids who aren't feeling as comfortable in, in one of these topic areas. So that's happening on Monday that we're gonna get a first look at the data.
When the survey just recently.
It was March seventeenth and, uh, we left it open into the middle of the next week. So I think it closed about March twentieth. So that data is now at UMS Lowell, they've. Uh, uploaded it into the database. They've designed an analytic dashboard that we'll be able to use. Um, and again, if any members of the public wondering, this is entirely, uh, free of cost to the district. Because UMS Lowell developed this process, uh, with a state grant. Um, and all of their, uh. Results are open source and available. Um, so there is no charge to the district for the surveys, for the. Uh, data collection, for the dashboard, anything. Uh, so we're able and we'll be able to do this annually now. So we'll start to build, launch to new data to see if. Yeah, to see if areas we've targeted are back improving or if new areas are emerging that we need to.
So we started implementing, we're acting on it, then how measures.
Yeah, so, um, so this, these were all in the report, uh. Sent to the state. And finally, we are looking at increasing planning time for teachers to develop additional support for targeted learners. So that was all, that's a summary of the SO report. I have the full report here. It's about forty pages long. Pass tracks of, so.
I appreciate you giving us. The, is this, remind me if this is gonna be.
It'll be for at least the next couple of years, I think, while we continue to have S R funding and, and receive funding from the state to, to target intervention. That will be required to file this with the state. But I also see that even if, even if aspects of this report aren't required. We're gonna be carrying to work forward, particularly. Surveying data and the, uh, monitoring of, uh. Gap closure, uh, for students in, um. Our targeted support groups, we, we, we want to make sure that we continue to close the, the gap. Uh, I'm not aware of a whole lot of districts that closed learning gaps fifty percent through the pandemic until now.
I, I realized after we have our, our calendar, we kind of added, just in the report. So I think next, next, just to. Oh, it's important, me.
Uh, yeah, just to get. Information. So Hillary, oh, um. Do you, uh, so she's. I was just thinking, I wasn't wondering, oh, all right. But do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, so the fact that was, that you've been able to develop. Well, it's phenomenal. Thank you, Jack. That, cause I've been wondering if this is the one and done thing with that, but it sounds like now that we've developed the relationship. We can continue to do this, especially because we were going down a path of doing survey on our own, right? It's so much more professional, not that it wouldn't have been, but it's just.
Like, a good survey, creating a survey is greater intensive.
Very.
Particularly type of survey like this, uh, they've been developing this for six years and they started with pilot and partner districts. These questions now meet scientific, very high reliability and validity. Uh, standards, which a homegrown survey almost never does. So this is now morgue against other schools in Massachusetts and even the country. Um, and, uh, you know, that type of data is hard to come.
The, um, my, my question is. Read different things about the Student Opportunity Act, but what are we actually receiving, uh, right now? It's, I think it's like thirty dollars a student or something. It's thirty thousand or something. That way. So that's pretty much given. You, you talk about increasing that, cause originally it was gonna be more than that, I thought. It's supposed to maybe that year, each year there were, it was rolling out in a certain, but I don't. Towards the foundation.
Um, until the state releases its budget, yeah, that's seems to be all over the yard.
Right, right. So right now we're getting about thirty-four thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
To be able to utilize. And, um, my, my last, and it's a comment, when it goes back to the budget request of, um, the professional development. The fact that we're only allocating twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Eleven out of our budget is another reason that we just, I mean, with all of these wonderful things that, that we're trying to do. For our students, for our staff, um. We just need to be able to, to have a better budget to do that.
It's, it's something else that's not related to SOA, but, um, just briefly. We, we are having, uh, Shrewsbury Family and Youth Services come in to train, uh. Our paraprofessionals on May fifth in, um, mental health first aid. They are, they are also a state-supported agency, so this training is free. Uh, and we are going to then, uh, next October on this. Uh, full of the professional development day, all of our teaching and professional staff will receive that training that. You know, we are exploring, um, bringing high quality professional development. At the best possible cost and it's hard to be free, but when you get free and it's high quality, it's just, it, it's just. You know, that's a win.
Thank you, Hillary. I, I'll, I'll go with Hillary and then I'll also go back with you. That's all. So, God, Chuck, thank you very much. I, I think the only, um. I think professional development, just to add on to Mary, like, all the research that we can buy all this. Curriculum and things, but you know, without a professional development, what are our features? It's not. As effective as it needs to be to support our students. Uh, refund our grants, funding that we've been exploring to, to help with that. I think it's just so for our staff. And I'm equally excited for all of our staff who are, who are engaging. It's too big, cause I think it just speaks to how, we've seen so many districts burn out, teacher burn out. And the willingness for teachers to really, you know, add more to their. Skills, um, in spite of all the, I think it's just. Amazing that they continue to be, you know, wanting better for our students and, and for each other. So. Um, Hillary, did you have?
Nope. Just thank you for the information and thank you for, um, all the. Professional development you're setting up and looking forward to the survey results. I think that they're gonna be really helpful with the stats that they're able to do and the processing.
I think, um. We are now moving on. We are going to the school choice.
Yep.
Yes. So, yeah, yeah.
Pretty. Three. Six, except for three, three and.
Uh, Mary, did you have any questions?
Yeah, um. The, the school choice students that we take in, do they factor into our student enrollment for chapter seventy? I know how big everything goes by, how many students you have.
The chapter seventy is students who are financially responsible for, but not entirely sure. So we are not responsible for students who choice in financially responsible.
I think that's where we get the, the, that's why we. So we.
Right, it was just not, yeah.
We are financially responsible for students who choice out.
So is, would it be helpful for us to have more students choice in? Within the limits of, that are stated.
We have availability.
Is that, do schools ever advertise that or in any way try to draw in?
It's listed on the Desi website. We're required by law to state how many seats by June first. Um, there's a, I get an email weekly reminding me that I have to submit our school choice seats. Throw it out there that school choice open and applications are due by June twentieth.
Like what we want to do, like a Facebook post that says, you know, do you love Maynard? Do you want to invite your friends in other towns? Like, here's our openings. Like, are we allowed to?
Yeah, no, no, no. We do advertise, we do put it out there to the community on social media. That school choice is open and with the link for the application and what seats are available.
Can we share that to like other towns or? For Facebook pages?
Like, you know, sort of like. We will be posting it on our website.
Yeah.
We've also done it in the past. We've done it in the action unlimited. You know, Colleen used to do that. I don't know if that's worth it or not, but that goes to a lot of communities. So that would be great.
Do you have any other questions, Hillary, or sorry, Mary?
That's all right. Um, I, I, I did look at the first grade to see if maybe we could. Open up a couple of slots. I know that sometimes we don't know how many kids are coming in during the summer, but it seemed as though we might be able to. Take a little bit more. Again, the school choice kids, you know, um, the.
We do need to leave into account for students who move into Maynard, right? That we still don't know what that is.
Right. But we just, that, that grade level seems to be. Either, uh, yeah, definitely. So that's why I thought we might be able to add something there.
First grade?
The first grade, yeah.
I was thinking that too, cause it is fewer kids than the other grades and, you know, that's probably when parents are interested as opposed to like second or third grade.
Right. This is what principals have been discussing it in back with.
Okay, Hillary. That was it. If there is, so we submit these numbers and I know we do this every year, remember? Um, but if, for instance, we had part of the year, split, what if we move out? Here and we had more seats, would we be able to, I think it precludes us from adding more students, right? If someone were expressing interest or do we?
Sure, I think we have to stick by the seats that we advertise in Desi.
Okay. Okay. So I wasn't sure about that. If there's an opportunity, like if we. We happen to, things change during the year, um. So it's really like, it's.
Usually.
Yeah. Brian, what would you think about the first grade having a couple of openings?
So I know that one of the proposals that we're discussing right now is if we can actually. Add a section. To some of these grades so that we can have lower class, lower students in the class or the week service. Also. Recently that we're seeing, we can only make gains. So by adding that. Doesn't help that.
Doesn't help that. Thinking as much. I'm guessing that's why they kind of held back on one and two, because that's where there's really seeing a variety of issues that we want to deal with. It's the best they.
Oh, I can't hear you, Brian.
Okay. And principals have recommended that because they would like to keep those classes really as low as possible. For a year or two to offer as much support as possible to all the students who seem to be. A little bit lower in a variety of ways and to offer the most of our support for literacy and math.
Okay. Um, could we try for next year if we're going to be potentially pulling, needing that some of the school choice funding for budget stuff? Um, see it like look into it a little bit next year for a grade one. If that's when we'd be most likely to get kids in and then have that consistent funding coming in potentially for many years.
We can certainly look at the numbers next year. Absolutely.
Yeah.
I know that some, some districts allow, if you have, um, kids, if you're teaching. And you'll, you're, they allow your, your children to, to choice in. Do we offer that if separate from this? So would they have to, just have to be open or? I know in the past we have had teachers have their children.
So we do have more or less an unspoken benefit as most districts do.
Right.
That is, that a teacher who works here can bring their student in. If with agreement with the principal, um, if that grade has seats available, we have them apply to school choice.
So if, for instance, in this scenario, it would, it would have to be a seat that's indicated best school choice.
Correct.
Like, correct. So if we were looking, teacher turned over and say someone could have any kids, that would not be something.
Not this year, but maybe next year if there were seats. We do, we do keep, um, actually I sent an application here to a teacher who fits that scenario.
Yeah, I, I, I would have impressed him to, you know, but that's something that's weighing on someone's mind and. You know, educating educators sometimes can be tricky. Um. I don't even, I don't know if it would be, they're just keeping one. That's ever a consideration, just to, if we find an applicant.
So I don't know how it works with our funding if Jesse looks at having seats and right, how we get that funding.
That's for their student to hear as long as there's actually approval.
So do we know if there's any teachers who, like at Green Meadow, who would have wanted to bring, would be wanting to bring their kid in? But are looking at this data and saying, sorry, what?
No, um, they, I think it's pretty common knowledge that they can bring their students. Cause we do have teachers who don't live in Maynard, who's students attend Maynard schools.
But are they looking at these, this, the data that Desi has, seeing that there's no room and then not asking?
I don't think so, because they're a staff member. The same goes for when they had tuition breaks for that.
Questions? Okay. So it sounds like for this, we are comfortable with keeping what is.
This year.
This year, we're recommended, um, but is the, maybe the discussion piece is that. Um, for grades that have eighteen, we would still be comfortable going maybe to nineteen. Is that kind of what, so much from looking at the first grade right there, they have, that's the one that has.
Of course, next year it'll be.
That'd be exciting, right? But just any grade in general, in the one group, um, that if it's. Looking at anything up to nineteen, closer to nineteen would be something we would want to potentially. Does that sound right to you that it's just for, just for context, when you bring that? Um, that maybe next year we would want to see how the discussions are, uh, considering up to nineteen. In a grade, in a, in a, in a block, we're looking at first grade right now is eighteen. So if we were to add seats there, it would might bring some of those up to nineteen. All right. Um, well, and there's no other discussion and we're comfortable for this year, then I would make a motion that we accept the school choice seeking as recommended. Is the documents, school choice seat recommendations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, seven? Any further discussion? Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Tasha Rivera, yes. Motion carries. I'm ready. Okay. So, uh, now we're just going to go to this, the article. I, not really too much to talk about, but, um, more on. You know, Mary, just to, your feedback and Hillary, your feedback on where we are. Um. It is, um, it was a little sub hostile conversation, I think, and as being talked about. Uh, and I think the way we presented it was, you know, again, if we can get the two fifty-seven return to the school, there has been a very much a willingness to. You know, step back and let's focus on other areas of the FY twenty-four budget that are, have other townies that we'd like to really bring attention to instead. But as it stands now, are we still comfortable with, um, retaining it in its form? The, um, and I, and I say that just because the deadline, I think at the next select board meeting, they might be. Either the next one or the following, they're going to be accepting the warrant. So if there is any amendment to. The warrant, it would have to be, or the article, we would have to do it at a, the next fourth, or maybe before a special meeting in some way.
But we are, you're still talking, right? And still talking to our time interviewer?
I am still talking. I don't.
Like I said, last week, we talked on Monday with FinCom was that, um, they, they heard it. I think they may not recommend, um, for it. I, I know I asked, I know we talked about, it would be great that FinCom would. Maybe not recommend the free cash and we could circle back to that. Uh, you know, we could have allocation, the way that. Um, Greg had initially engaged, um, with you on. But I don't know if. Any other, any other thoughts I should share on where we are? We should just kind of go ahead and hopefully our. Our sponsor comments from this point.
Want to play nice at scenes. But on the other side. Like I said before, we're hitting the wall and, and we keep hearing, well, next year, next, you know, and, and we keep getting. Act funding that we need, um, for, for the schools to move forward. Like I always say, even if they stay the same, they're actually falling backwards. So. I'm fearful that if we, if we go a scenario B, I guess it was, which is the fifty thousand, the eighty thousand, with all the cuts that we need to make at seven thousand. I'm just know. The hardship versus if we present, if we have this as part of the town warrant, even if.
It has to be a lot of the conversation.
Exactly. Even if then say, you know, we, it gives us the opportunity to talk at town meeting about why we've presented this. And then then if we decide between now and then that we want to retract it and do what, you know, what the free cash is all about. At least the town knows what we're dealing with. That's, that's where I can.
And I, I thousand percent agree. And I, I feel like it is a disservice to our residents. Like we're sheltering them with the issues that, that they need to be armed on. And it's not just the schools, right? They have seniors, they have a lot of other areas that are, um, in need. And I, I wish they, most of them would come up with more town conversations because at some point when black revenue coming in. Um, and you have services, we, like, what are we going to do? So I, I think at that point. I agree that, you know, whether it fails or not, I think it opens that conversation. That has been lacking from a budget perspective. And I, I think we've been asking about it for years, like, hey, like this is two point five is not enough. And. And so I feel like this is the only thing that we have within our power to try to push those conversations a little bit more. I, I don't know. Hillary, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm at pretty much the same place I've been at previously where I think that, um. I have an openness to compromising. I think that if, that, you know, the town as a whole needs to make cuts. If the school is half of the budget. I can understand the need for the school to suffer for half of the cut, half of the deficit. Or account, um, account for half of the deficit, but right now we're facing all of it and that's. Unreasonable and unfair and not in line with the town's values, as I've heard them from residents. Um, and so I think that this is what we have to do right now. Um. I think anytime I talk about it, I would say we're open to compromise creativity. Um, but all the discussions don't seem to be, um, interested in that to the extent that we would need. Um, and I think that there. We need, the town needs to make cuts. And the residents are going to bear the burden of them and many of them don't even know that this is a topic right now, or they think that. Um, it's a topic every year and then it all works out. Um. And so the more that they can be involved in where those priorities lay and where they want. The burden to fall, the better. Um. But. I think it is what it is for right now.
Um. So I think that. I think that we are comfortable, it sounds like staying where we are. Um. We then need to do our sponsor comments and I know we've talked about that. So that will be the next thing that, uh, maybe you and I can, yeah, can work on, Mary. And, uh, and now that we have, we can include, um, the updated presentation. For the town, um, maybe we'll look at those scenarios that might be a little confusing. So I'm not sure we can think about how we put it, incorporate that or not. Might just be like, just take those slides out. That'll be a, um, a conversation for us to, to decide. And then, um, and that can be the basis for, for the, the article. And then, um, in worst case, yes, we can, we can even withdraw at that town meeting if, if that's. If that, no, is the need. I think. To be honest, I'm going to just say, I don't think that there's been more talk of overrides than I've seen ever right now. And, and so at a minimum, if that, and not that I'm happy that that's, that we're at a place that we may need to do that, but. Having the conversation and has been lacking. Or the, um, appetite to even have a conversation when our, they're just there. So if that is what. Positive comes out, let's have a conversation realistically about what's going on in our town. Then that would be, it would be a success, uh, that well. So. All right. There's nothing to vote on tonight. I just wanted to make sure that we had a touch point on it. I just.
I have one other thing. Um. So I wish that, you know, I don't think that the Facebook pages in town are the best mechanism of communication. Um, but since people are vocal there and engaged there and they're not really coming and speaking at meetings. Um, how would we feel? I know we have to be, we have to be careful about open meeting laws and stuff, but in some way. Posting to some of those sites, you know, that there is this choice that the town's going to have to make and. Starting a discussion with folks there. Sort of like the whole concept of meeting people where they're at. That's kind of where they're at, but.
Maybe, I, I like that idea of putting it out there, like raising the awareness. So I think maybe the message that we put out, so whatever the, you know, the sponsor. Somewhat sponsor common budget message, right? We've talked that we need to have, we can maybe publish that. We can have that published. We can, you know, put that on our, you know, school web, Facebook. And then at the next meeting. We can just put a reminder in that, that we have a public, you know, we have, we're voting on the budget. So if someone wants to either send us comments or, you know, send them to. Select board or, you know, however they want to do that, but it raises that conversation more, um, more broadly. That it's welcome to email us one-on-one that we can, or, you know. We can hear the, the questions. People, I mean, we've, we've gotten some comments, but I think people are somewhat engaged and Brian's done a great job of putting it into schools. You know, newsletters every week. So I've heard helpfulness around that, but as far as what our community.
I think my concern is voter turnout at town meeting, um, that there's people that. I don't, I, I worry that the people who would be most impacted by the cuts to the school budget. Aren't aware enough to know that this is something they need to pay attention to and come to town, either express the select board before town meeting. Or come to town meeting and vote for, um. You know, the turnout to town meeting is so low that. It's not necessarily representative of the community as a whole.
No, and I will say though, that there's a ton of articles for this. I mean, there's every amendment to the charter is separate. They're going to have to talk about that to the charter. Um, and there's just, there's citizen, I think this will be a well attended because you have a lot of citizens petitions. Um, that are actually going to be put forth. So I think they, um. Um, will bring some attendees challenges.
But sometimes those can be targeted towards certain demographics, like are we targeting parents of young kids?
Well, one of them is, is about Green Meadow. So, you know. I, I don't know. I don't know the right, but I just know that, that it may be a more well attended because the, it has a lot of meat. In this particular meeting that we, I think I've seen in a while, um. The green stuff, you know, the school has an article, um, citizens petitions charter. So, I don't know, I took, we have babysitters. Make sure we're planning for that. And we're talking about it too. Talk off line a little bit more about that. That's okay with you, just so we can. Think some ideas and how we can strategize about, um. And, and we're going to be, you know, meeting with seniors and I think, um. You know, thinking about when to go into the schools.
Mm-hmm.
So. All right. Anything else? Okay, good. All right. Um, so the, the chair report, I, I, I've talked pretty much. All the other things. I just wanted to wish, um, community members a happy Passover for letting those who celebrate, happy Ramadan, letting those who celebrate. And just to echo the appreciation of our paraprofessionals, um, which I. They should be happy for our professionals day, but I know that they get a day to, to, all the work that they do, um, is. Um, a thousand percent underrated because I, I think it's one of the backbone for, uh, supporting our, our students and most, so thank you for all the work that. And I also just wanted to take a moment to, um. To just thank all of our staff who. Every day come to work and our students who are in an environment where they can go and stay because of gun violence. Uh, I know that there's feels very, not much that we can do on a school meeting level, but I think, you know, seeing the, the students this week and how they've. Um, expressed their disagreement with, um, decisions that, you know, elected officials made. I, I think it. It's just needs to just continuously be talked about. So thank you for, for continuing to get up every day and claim to, to work and, um. And, you know. I got a lot of work to do, but just thank you very much, all of you, and now to, to protect our students from each other. So. That's all I have for my, my report, uh, subcommittee report. Um, Hillary, do you have anything?
Um, for policy, we're working away at them. Um, we're meeting, I believe it's coming Tuesday. Um, although I could be wrong, it could be Wednesday. Um. To adjust the, um, go over the, um, questions that were brought up last week. And to, um, keep plugging away at more policies. D E I has not met again, um. So hopefully we'll meet soon. Um, and that's all I have.
I had something for policy. I, I, I talked tomorrow and I actually spoke with Brian this morning. Uh, thanks for reminding me. So the select board introduced. Or Greg introduced to the select board at their meeting the other night, a draft policy for public comments. And the way it was framed. Was that if it was adopted, it would apply to all who worked. Um. The way it was worded expressed that public comments, it was very much, it would have to be applied to every meeting across the floor, like. Have every meeting would have a public comments. So I expressed hesitation. I don't think everyone understood. We have our own policy regarding public comments. It's been vetted by legal. Uh, recently, I know that we may have some tweaks because of the judicial ruling. So, um, I'm going to email Sarah. Uh, recently, I know that we may have some tweaks because of the judicial ruling. So, um, I'm going to email Sarah and just get her and, you know, and C.C. Morrow and, and Brian, just to see like, this is what our current policy is. Um, here is, you know, the proposed one for the tactic that they would be looking at, you know, do we, you know, how does that work when we have, um, conflicting policy? Um, and does their policy override or that kind of stuff? I just want to figure it out just to make sure that nobody needs running the foul to anything has worked. And we're just looking for what's allowed, what's not.
Um, if it's a, if it's not in the town charter or the bylaws, does it have, would it have to apply to the school committee?
That's what I want to get clarity on. It, it did when it came to like the remote policy. So, um, you know, they, this, the town and I don't know if that we had to, but the town's policy, you know, was, um, more restraining or, um, than, than what the state required. So it just is a good thing to just flush out, you know, because if this is something that can happen as they start implementing more policies, I just want to understand where the jurisdictional oversight starts and stops and, um, and how that may, I mean, that impacts us in our, um, in our oversight of our own policies. So anyway, just as a, a thought, I did let them know that, you know, it would be something that we would be discussing internally as well. So they didn't vote on anything, but it was discussed and they did have some questions for Greg to take back to their.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, just, uh, I don't really think I've done anything for subcommittees. Um, I know we're meeting budget subcommittee next week, but um, just the National Honor Society, the Junior National Honor Society, um, that Brian talked about. I also wanted to just thank Molly Holman for taking that on. As, um, you know, for five years, right? That's what, so it's again, it's, it's our teachers going above and beyond. That was fun. Um, that was so much fun. And it's, it's a big undertaking. She, you know, you can tell that she's really passionate about it. So again, just kudos to, to her.
World participation in the high school too, like this time.
It's very impressive. Parents and kids, by the way, but no, anyway, um, and then, um, let's see, on the thirteenth of April, Elizabeth and I are going to Fowler for, um, teachers, if they want to come in and, um, just stop in and say hi and just, you know, offer any suggestions or that. On the twenty-first of April, you and I are going to the senior center, which will be great too. Um, and they advertise that, so I'm hoping we're going to get a good response from that. Um, and then Brian, I know when Keenan Field, when we first received the monies in the CPC, um, we were talking about sending a thank you to the CPC. Well done, saying thank you for the money. And now that Keenan Field, like this is spoken, because we've got the can we maybe come and send a thank you or else we thank, just to, just to appreciate the CPC that they I don't, yeah, just because I don't know if they receive thank yous. And it would be, you know, they were huge, what, a hundred and three thousand dollars or something they provide that. Um, you know, that was private funding to, to allow that to happen. So if we could do that, that would be really wonderful. Um.
And then thank you. Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, and the thank you, could you maybe add like when the girls varsity games are coming up in case they want to come check it out and watch a game?
Didn't Brian, didn't you put that in the, in the superintendent's notes that you haven't seen yet? It, it's right here.
Well, I mean, in the, in the two CPC and the thank you.
Oh, oh, so that they can maybe come. Okay.
Yeah, like say, like come, come see what you, you made, you made watching one of these games.
Perfect, perfect. Good, good thought. Um, and then the last thing, you know, only because we always seem to get caught off guard with the spring being so busy to, to schedule dates to actually start Brian's, um, evaluation.
Well, we do, we have some dates, do we?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I need to remember it.
Yeah.
Because we always seem to end up in the summer or summer. No, we do have a workshop that we need to do and then we have a daily talk with the personnel. We reviewed it last time in our personnel just to keep us
Good.
Um, on target. And then also, um, as we get closer to the end of the year, we have that, we already have a draft one started next year. So we just need a pencil in.
Okay.
Some dates where we can kind of start. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. No, just because it just always seems as though we.
I think you might have a conflict about the date that we had a workshop. So we'll circle back because that was, I think, one of the workshops.
All right, great. And, and the only other piece was, um, I thought we were going to receive a presentation by, um, Jeff for the co-teaching model again, that he was going to update us on, because there's been some conversation about reenacting it or, or whatever. But I thought when we talked to him, we can talk to him anywhere, that he was going to come back to us. Um, so about that, so.
Um, okay, well, that is, and I don't have anything else to, to add, um, from there. So then, um, I think it's just a matter of, um, minutes, so we have minutes from February sixteenth, March ninth and March twenty-three. I mean, if you edit.
I'm good with them with that, that's what Mary has.
Most of them were just grammatical. There was only one that was, they had that fifty thousand dollar number as a separate number.
So without objection, then I will accept the amended minutes for February, uh, February sixteenth, March ninth and March twenty-third with that. Oh, okay. Uh, we'll call Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Tasha Barry?
Yes.
Okay, and then the warrants, uh, twenty-three fifty-one, twenty-three fifty-two, twenty-three fifty-three, and then twenty-three fifty-five.
So this is a one voice warrant that I emailed tonight.
Oh.
Nice to get done ASAP. You had to get a check to Spain.
Oh, Jen Adams.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So you know what?
That one, yeah.
Right.
So you can either choose to do it now or we wait.
Okay, okay. Um, so I will, uh, yeah, go up and tell it with Hillary. Well, I think she emailed actually already about that. So, um, so if we're already approving that, then I, we're just, do we have fifty-four?
No, that one, I just went out.
Okay.
And she has some. Is that one?
Okay.
I didn't want to touch it.
No, no worries. So then, uh, without objection, then I accept those approved warrants. Yep, all right. Well, I think that is, uh, and, uh, I'll be done. All right. So then I will make a motion to adjutant. Second. Okay, we'll call Hillary, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Bradley? Yes. Tasha Barry? Yes. Thank you all for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary.